It was awesome.
Good, good. Yeah, I keep looking at him as a little boy, little Ricky, you know?
Oh, he's not little.
I know.
He's like six-three.
Wow. Yeah, Matt grew up pretty big too. He's bigger than I am.
Yeah, it's like my husband was like the one of the litter. He's the shortest of all his, he's probably like five-eight.
Yes.
They always take after their mom's bike.
Is he still working?
Uh, no, he, well, yes and no. He retired after thirty-nine years.
Hmm.
And he is, um, he works at our title company.
Oh, good.
And we have a bunch of rentals, but, um, yeah, he's still working. Yeah, yeah, I'm telling that too. I always get that.
Okay, it's nine o'clock. Do you guys want to join us with a pledge? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Board of Commissioners moves to approve the February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Roll call.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Yes.
Water Resources.
Water Resources.
You're up.
Good morning. Happy birthday.
Today's your birthday?
Saturday.
Happy birthday, happy birthday.
We're gonna celebrate today anyway, right?
One anniversary. One anniversary.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, French friend.
I knew that because I took that and they kicked me out.
That's good. Okay, go ahead, Janet.
Board of Commissioners approves the separation of the Water Resource Director and Sanitary Engineer job duties, creating two separate job descriptions.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
The board moves in accordance with section three oh five point three zero Ohio Revised Code, Board's Resolution twenty-one dash zero three nine six, part nine. Board of Commissioners acknowledge and approves the county administrator's approval to authorize seven-day internal posting for streets for a water treatment plant. Operator position vacated by John Calta, who was promoted to Water Resources Superintendent November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, Portage County Water Resources with external posting without internal appointment is made.
Second.
Roll call.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Board of Commissioners moves to authorize the hire of Damian Blair, water treatment operator, replacing Richard Kudak, Portage County Water Resources, starting with start date is March seventh, two thousand twenty-two. The Board of Commissioners agrees to this hire's contingent upon applicant passing required pre-employment testing.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Tony.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina. Yes.
Board of Commissioners moves to authorize the transfer of Harry Carpenter, engineer technician three, Water Resources Treatment Operator one, replacing Brandon Mutter, effective March seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Since Mr. Carpenter is a current employee, pre-employment screen is not required. Mr. Carpenter will serve a hundred twenty days probation period per current CBA.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Board moves to authorize a seven-day internal posting of engineer technician three position vacated by Harry Carpenter, Portage County Water Resources, with external posting without internal appointment is made.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Board moves to approve the external posting of Water Resource Director for Portage County Water Resources Department. The position will be posted as open until filled, as reviewed by applicants and begin March first, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Board moves to approve John Vance, engineer manager, to sanitary engineer for Portage County Water Resources, effective date February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. The position of sanitary engineer is replacing the engineer manager position, but no probation period will be served.
You know, I have a question on that. I mean, I'm all for that, for John Vance doing this, but how did that come about? I think I was coming in here and was talking to him and...
I spoke with him.
Okay, okay, oh, good.
I think we talked about it, that we were gonna do.
Oh, yeah.
That we were going to, and now he said he would.
Right.
And now it's the only thing I...
He did, yes, yes. I spoke with him and because it's really basically the same position.
That he's got now.
We acknowledge it so that we are in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, basically. It was, we just really updated the title and included a hard advice code.
Yes, you asked last week if we had even talked to him before that.
And I did, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, next.
We gotta approve that.
Oh, yes.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Board moves to approve the clerical specialist three title and wage for clerical special four title and wage for equal duschel, Portage County Jobs and Family Services, the change in originally discussed with JFS Director Kelly Jo Depris, meeting with the Board of Commissioners on January twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, with that amended.
Hey, roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Vicky.
Second, okay. Tony.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Janet. Do you have anything else for today?
That was it. All right. Well, thank you.
All right, Sue, you're next.
This looks like the normal.
Yep, it's the normal. First one is our normal child support schedule for January.
Board of Commissioners moves to transfer fund fourteen fourteen Child Support Administration to fourteen ten Public Systems Fund.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Board of Commissioners moves to transfer fund fourteen thirteen WIA Fund to fund fourteen ten Public Systems Fund.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Nice saying that. Joe, you're up, sir.
I don't think they have any call breaks, do they? Did they have questions about?
Nope. Be good, Vicky.
Yes.
Board moves in accordance with section three oh five point three zero K Ohio Revised Code, this Board's Resolution twenty-one dash zero three nine six, and this Board's Resolution twenty-one dash zero eight seven eight, Board Commission acknowledges and approves the county administrator to approve. Direct, Board moves to direct the auditor of offices to pay and process February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, and February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, bills, ACH payments, wires, journal vouchers, and then and now, as applicable, and contingent upon verification of the report as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget Financial Management.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Board moves to process February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, budget amendments as reviewed and recommended by Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second.
Roll call.
Tony. Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Thank you, Joe.
Yes.
Do you call, Johnny?
We may talk about the shelves we're putting in out there.
Mm-hmm.
Are we going to the ceiling in there?
Probably not because of fire code, but...
Fire code for shelves?
Yeah. Yeah. She'll, she'll find out about that because that, that's an issue. They needed shelving and they had a hard time getting it in, I guess, because we had received an email from the prosecutor, how it say was that his files or, or boxes and files are sitting on the floor because it gets more air and they have to repaint them, so...
That's surprising, they have to, some forever and some for a hundred years.
Yeah, some that you can never get rid of.
I'm just really glad to see this Resolution eight. I loved it.
Resolution. Oh, that, and that's, that's... This is finally saved anywhere, so I know you probably, but that's not... Oh, not entirely, it's a, it's one of... After we finish it. Sure.
Okay.
In accordance, Board moves in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, section three twenty-five zero seven, the Board of Commissioners acknowledged and received of the month in record of proceedings and transactions for January twenty twenty-two, as presented by the Portage County Sheriff's Department.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Board of Commissioners moves to acknowledge and receive the Portage County Investment Reconciliation for the month of January twenty twenty-two, received February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, as presented by the county auditor and the county treasurer.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
As literally more...
Okay, can we get more on this one, Michelle? I had asked you about that yesterday. Reject the bids for emergency and specialized services for Portage County Water Resources Department, or can put this on there?
Um, I have not read back about that yet. I'm not sure, um, where that came from.
Let me just...
Yeah, I did.
No. It would say that all bids received should be rejected, no bid met specifications. That's what I, yeah. Because that should have been under Joe Anderson.
Is there a contract related?
No, but it says here, um, because that's who receives the bids. And it says by internal services and that they should be rejected. That's why I was confused what it's single about. I think it came in as a, as a water item, so we just put it in this line, they weren't coming, I think that's what happened. It came from out of...
So do we have to do anything with that?
Yeah, we, we just gotta make the, pass the resolution, reject the bids.
The Board of Commissioners moves to reject the bids providing emergency and specialized services for Portage County Water Resources.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Good morning, Joanna.
Good morning.
Hello.
First thing I have on my agenda today is talking about the records center and shelving.
Yep.
Yes.
Over the last couple of, well, like the last year, everything has increased out there with the amount of records that people are bringing in. It says we have about thirteen thousand boxes out there. And there's areas, you know, there for a while, every year we were buying shelving for the rooms and getting them put up and then we kind of stopped because of funding. So we're coming to you guys today, after I talked to the Record Commission last week, to try to get funding for enough shelving to put in the auditorium area and some of the other rooms. He wants to kind of split it up. We can buy taller shelving for the auditorium states.
How high can we go?
Pardon?
How high can we go?
Um, ten feet. Seven, wait a minute, seven feet are the normal sized ones.
In a normal room.
In the normal, yeah, there used to be the, what do you want to call it? The patient room type of things.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then ten feet, we can go in the auditorium. We will have to buy though a bigger ladder.
Yes.
To go up that far, but I wanted to come to you guys and go ahead and see if I could put the, you know, give the information to Joe to put, um, budget in. I'd like to get as much as we can, so I'm looking around forty, between forty and forty-five thousand dollars if we can go that high. Um, and that'll give, I mean, it's not gonna do everything, but...
How long will that last? How, how much of a reprieve will that, that give us?
Um, well, what that'll do is every, the auditorium is totally filled with everything on the floor.
And it's only about three and a half, four feet.
Right, and that's all, you know, you can't do any more than that because then the boxes all break down and stuff, so that'll give us more room to, I don't want to say expand because we will anyway.
Hold more.
Right, it'll hold more and, um, we, I did ask the Record Commission folks to please do whatever they have to do to get it cleaned up. He's got departments out there that need to...
Go through and destroy.
And so we're really gonna push on that this year.
Yeah.
Trying to get people to say, come on, let's, let's get rid of this stuff. And then that should, I would hope, balance out enough so that we won't have to, um, look like outside of Ohio, you know, into the salt mines and places like that.
Joanna, when are we on the microfilm? I know we've talked about that forever, but I, and I know some people still want that paper, you know, but are we anywhere on that?
We, well, when Ramona retired, we started, we used the balance of her salary to take it out and have it done outside and it was a little bit quicker. Um, I'll need to check with Glenn to see how many more we have to do, but it's all backlog stuff. Now, you know, Jill is trying to get hers and she's doing some filming, or filming for the other folks and it's not necessarily filming, it's the scanning stuff that she's doing, but you still are supposed to have a microfilm piece done, which they do when they scan the others so that we've got that history. Yeah, it's a, um, and that's the other reason why, it's like, we don't want to send anything out to be microphoned if it could really be destroyed according to their thing.
Absolutely.
So that's one of the reasons why we're trying to push, trying to get those people to, you know, to get their stuff out first, so...
Right, okay.
I give Glenn a lot of credit because he's the only guy out there now and he does a remarkable job for us and has things as straight as he can get them, so...
But you know, we used to have free people out there, so I just wonder how he's keeping up with everything and I know Jill had, uh, requested that maybe she get her own microfoaming and scanning stuff that she could start doing her own and then possibly even Patty Smith's in court.
She, that's what she's doing. She's scanning, um, directly from their records up there, which makes a lot of sense. They don't have to be moved in. They're done right in the office. Pretty, part of his job has kind of weaned out a little bit now with, you know, forms online and things like that, so that's how he's able to do more, but he's mostly retrieving things for people. That's the majority of his job is, oh, we need these files pulled because Judge da-da-da needs, this is coming forward. So a lot of his work right now is pulling files, retrieving trials, files, taking them back and forth between the prosecutor's office and the courts.
So who does that when he's off?
No one right now. We, you know, we, we give all of the court, you know, like the clerk of courts, we say, okay, Glenn's gonna, you know, he's got vacation coming, so do you know what you need? Get them to us.
But do they have access that someone could let them in if they needed something?
We can, we can let anybody in, but for anybody to try to find how things are located out there might be a more problem on that. Right now, I don't think we want people going out there and trying to lift boxes and move boxes around because then you're looking at a possible bad claim or something like that.
Well, that's, that's a concern about going ten feet versus seven feet, I would have. I mean, I don't know how heavy some of those boxes are, but that, that's quite a bit of distance to add to...
Well, and that, and that would be, I think, I would think that Glenn would put the lighter ones because those boxes, they come down jam-packed sometimes, but not all of them, so I think that he'll know which ones to put on the top that we can make best use of the space, that's all, but...
And we're gonna, as soon as we get the shelves, we're getting a new ladder?
Well, we'll have to, yeah.
Do they put the shelves together for us?
Oh, no. No, our maintenance guys help Glenn usually. We, we'll send one guy out there and it'll take a while for them to put things together, but...
So...
The freight is heavy to get them there. That's, that's an expense.
That's huge. So the prosecutor, a lot of, all the federal have to be kept forever or a hundred years or something like that?
That's what we were told, well, we were told forever on him and then at our meeting, who was Juvenal and Provey was the one with the hundred years now.
You know, Joanna, doesn't that pay to disintegrate? I mean, I'm not...
That's why there's just a microfilm.
Yeah. It hasn't so far. I mean, you know, I mean, he's been able to retrieve, but when you think about it, how many files fifty years ago are, is he actually retrieving? Yeah, yeah.
See, we have to keep them, but is he actually having to move those boxes around and get into them? No.
Now, does he wear one of those braces on?
He has that, yeah. He does have those, yeah.
I thought so, okay.
We could have long talk about those braces.
Oh, you don't have...
I wrote dissent against those.
She doesn't wear it at all times, only when necessary.
Only, only when you move. They're dangerous.
Really?
Absolutely. If you wear it as a weightlifter, as they were prescribed, they're great. If you wear it all the time, your back weakens.
Ooh. Oh, wow.
He has them on, I forget.
Yes, yes, I, I was there too.
Okay. Well, that's good to know.
Excuse me?
It becomes dependent on the brace.
Right, and then, so that you get a twenty-six-year-old construction worker that wears a brace every day, his girlfriend washes it for him, his wife washes it for him, he forgets it and that's the day he gets hurt.
Oh, okay, well, that's good to know. I didn't know that.
Anyway.
All right, so if that's okay, then I'm gonna get the paperwork ready to get the funding put in place to order. Sounds great, thank you. Um, then as far as the resolutions go, um, they're mostly normal. The ones that you see there that are like number two through five for the county engineer, we had to do that because, um, they were set to advertise with the record on a Monday and they're not doing their paper anymore that day, the printed paper, and the prosecutor said we probably want, want to make sure that when we, um, put our bid notices in, that it is in a, in a printed form so people can see it that way, not necessarily just electronic. So she, she didn't...
We did them.
With the dates.
Board of Commissioners moves to award the proposal on unentrenched agreement on behalf of the Jobs and Family Services for Northeast Ohio, Northeast Ohio Adoption Services for Foster and Adoptive Initial Home Assessment Services and Child Services.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Board of Commissioners moves to agree to amend the Resolution twenty-two dash zero zero eight nine, adopted February eighth, two thousand twenty-two, approving the specifications for acrylic water-based graphic paint for the use of Portage County Engineer and setting a time and date to receive bids for the same.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Board of Commissioners moves to agree to amend the Resolution twenty-two zero zero not, zero zero nine zero, adopted February eighth, two thousand twenty-two, approving the specifications for various aggregate materials for the use of Portage County Engineer and set a time and date to receive bids of the, for the same.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Board of Commissioners agrees to amend the Resolution twenty-two dash zero zero nine one, adopting, adopted February eighth, two thousand twenty-two, approving the specifications for various highway materials for the use of Portage County Engineer and set a time and date to receive bids for the same.
Second.
Roll call.
Tony. Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Board of Commissioners moves to agree to amend Resolution twenty-two dash zero zero nine two, adopted February eighth, two thousand twenty-two, approving the specifications for ubiquitous liquid, ambiguous materials for the use of Portage County...
Bitumin.
Bitumus. Bitumus. I asked that too, Vicky.
Yeah, bitumus.
Bitumus, my favorite word. Bitumus material for the use of Portage County Engineer and set a time and date receiving bids for the same.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Board of Commissioners declares necessity purchase two all-terrain vehicles for use of Portage County Sheriff's Department.
And Joanna, that's coming from the jail commissary?
Yes, ma'am.
And I know we asked on the seventh, is that still coming from the general fund?
No, it's, it should not be coming from March, but I know, and, and I asked, Michelle, did you talk to Joe and where is this coming from?
The next one down, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The next one down, according to Ron Ross, because I said, is this coming from your general fund budget? And he said, that would be up to Joe, perhaps the sales tax fund zero 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 two, we have no appropriation in the sixth group, so the funds would need to be appropriated. So if you want these to come from the sheriff's general fund, they'd have, there'd have to be an appropriation in his budget in the general fund, or if you want to take them out of what they're suggesting, that zero 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 two fund that was set up for other things, they're aware of that fund and I, and so that's why I said, until you guys, they should have come to you and talked about the, you know, wanting to buy them and how it was going to be as far as I'm concerned.
Well, and there's my problem, because here we are again, we're two months into the budget and now they're wanting more funding put in this budget and I say no, unless they can find it in what they've already have, we should not be adding to their budget. We're not even two months into this. And Joe, I spoke to Joe last week, he requested information from them and they did not respond to you. They blew him off. Nope.
So, you know, so I, and I don't know, I mean, I don't have that information. All I was asking for was because they sent the quote and said, or no, the Liberty Ford called me and said, I'm holding these...
Well, they're calling you, they're calling Michelle.
I'm told, holding these cars and I'm like, okay.
What cars? Yeah.
Yeah. So then we started backtracking, trying to find out, and then that's where we're at.
So Joe, do you have a comment on this?
So is this for the drug task force or is this for the detective?
You, you, you're drug task force.
No, it's not.
But made up of detectives.
Of, of detectives.
According...
Because they have money in drug task force, and I said they should take it from there.
Well, the original email from Liberty Ford to me said drug task force cars.
Oh, really? Yes.
So that's where I started.
That's how I heard too.
And so, and so that's where I started and said, okay, you know, if you're taking it from there, is this an outside checking account or is it the inside fund?
Yeah.
And then I said, and then they said, well, no, these are not drug task force cars. These are for the detective bureau. Ralph came, Ralph came back and said they were, and he, he listed this, the four detectives that were going to get them, but I said...
But here's the thing. We gave them how many cars last year, Joe?
Uh, 12.
We were leasing 30.
We approved him for 12 cars?
And then we approved for this year, another 12 cars.
I'm sorry. I did, I, you, you got 18 cars last year, and they're getting 12 cars this year.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause we approved for five supervisors, remember? 'Cause they wanted to lease them, and we said, no, let's buy them. And then seven others.
Yep.
So here's my thing. I mean, here, again, we're not even two months into this budget, and, and this is coming through. They need to find that money in their budget.
I mean, if it's for the task force, task force, um, their outside checking account has like $84,000 in there.
They need to, yeah.
And that's for, I mean, um, the drug plus, the drug seizures.
Yeah, they're, they're doing great on that. So they need to use those funds versus keep coming to the, to the general fund for this.
That's what I was gonna ask. Do we know the, the balance in that drug task force fund? We do, okay.
Eighty-seven thousand.
Well, this is their outside checking account. The drug, drug checking.
Right.
So that's where they need to look for those money.
So we, we've got two. I read a resolution, and we didn't vote on it?
No. Because it says general fund.
Well, the, the terrain was...
No, no, train, the train, we, we might have.
We did, yes.
Yeah. So that one we, we approved because it's coming out of the commissary.
The commissary, yes.
Right. So we haven't voted on that one, and then I agree with, we need more information.
There's only more to explore for the AT.
Okay.
For number...
Number six.
Okay. So roll call?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, this is for the ATVs?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay. Second by Vicky. Okay, Tony?
Roll call?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
And number seven?
Number seven, didn't we table this last week because of the...
We, it was other questions we had. Now they're another question.
They didn't have all the information, and so...
And we changed.
So we need to tell them, they need to take this from their funds. 'Cause I, I understand they think that sales and use tax is all their money, but it's not. It, it can also be used for courts. It could be used for other things. And again, I would have thought this is something they should have pre-planned for. So if they want to do it and try to stay within their budget and use the funds that they have, from the drug task force...
Do you want me to email them back and tell them?
Or either that or Joe can. Joe, do you wanna, since they did not respond to you?
Since that kind of pushed it off on saying Joe would be the one to decide what, what funds?
Well, no. So how started is they asked for $29,000 for this back in January 31st, and I, I even went to Ron Ross, we're in commission, and he went to Ralph. To answer, to answer, answer why, can I, I...
Some of the emails saying that we asked that date, and nobody responded to us, was put off.
Joe, what's the balance of that sales tax money account?
Um...
It had like 1.1...
It's like around 1.5.
It's 1.4?
Around 1.5.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, but the thing, the, the drug task force money, this, this isn't for drug task force cars. I don't know how they're gonna use that either.
Well, well, there's...
That's what I told.
Well, well, that, it's drug task force, but then we're totally, it's not, we don't know who's on the...
We're switching.
No. So they need to explain that. And they need to have their facts together before they come. And they should come like anyone else. If they need this, they should come and request it and explain it to us. Not circumvent, stirring staff people and not respond to others. So...
I will send you the email that Ron Ross sent to Michelle. Are you got it to him?
Okay. Very good. 'Cause that has it all in it. Yeah, just follow the process.
On Tuesday, Ron asked if this was on the schedule. Like, I wasn't part of all those other conversations. It was, hey, is this on the schedule? And I said, yeah, it's on the schedule. We're discussing right now.
They keep stealing information.
We need to be on site.
But I just wanted to make sure it's, it's clear. The drug task force, that's what they initially requested the vehicle for, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
That was, I would, that's what I was told. We did, because they could see, they see our drug task force guys come in and they wave at them. Uh, so this is to change vehicles, and now we're talking about detective bureau versus...
And that is what Liberty Ford told, said, was that, yes. I didn't hear that from the sheriff's office. What Ron said in the email was, is that no, he talked to Ralph, and Ralph said they were for, for detectives, Kennedy, Richie...
Well, I just, Joe, just get confirmation, because the drug task force is made up of detectives. So that might be why there's confusion here.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You know what I'm saying?
And that's what I think. But I, I think it still goes back...
It's the detectives in drug task force.
To the drug task force that is made up of Portage County detectives.
Well, that makes sense.
Yeah. I, I'm not a sheriff expert, but that's, that's my opinion.
Well, no, that was our understanding, because they specifically said drug task force. And they said, oh, no, it's detectives, but it's detectives for the drug task force.
And I know that Liberty is holding these cars, so if we could get the funding figured out, and I, and I forwarded you the email from Ron Ross, which he just sent this week. So, um, if you can get with him and just, let's just get it straight.
Oh, yeah.
So we can bring it back.
Yeah.
But do you want the sheriff's department to come in and talk about it to you?
No, not at this point. But the next time, they need to follow proper protocol, and they need to respond to Joe and not circumvent Joe and go to Joanne. And then Joanne comes in, and we're like, this is the first we've heard of this. And she can't answer.
Yeah, because I don't know who comes and makes, makes meetings with you guys either or talks to you guys, so...
Yeah.
There has to be some continuity there.
Yeah.
Well, as, as, as long as the communication is straight, I don't think they have to come in. But as long as we know, you know.
Yeah.
So Joe can work with them direct and get that all figured out and bring it back. Joanne was bringing it forward just for discussion.
Right.
Yes, and thank you, Joanne. Okay, so we'll pull that for this week until we get that straight.
Pull number seven. Board of Commissioners moves declare unused excess property owned by Portage County and set bid date for sales unused excess real estate located in Ravenna Township owned by Portage County Commissioner.
And that's the motor pool. Finally, everything is all cleared. We, you know, there's no more worry about underground anything. We're ready to go.
Cool.
So hopefully the folks that gave me numbers to call them are still interested.
Absolutely.
All right, do we have a second? Second, sorry. Roll call?
Tony?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Who wrote this resolution for the cars? Is that Ron Ross?
The, the one where, where the four?
Four vehicles.
Yes, it was Ron. Yeah. Originally, he put, originally when he sent it, he did not, I mean, they want to turn four in, but I said, well, what four cars? He, he didn't list the bid numbers or anything. I mean, they have so many cars out there. That's why it went back to him and he, he put that in. Yeah. So no, that wasn't a normal one like I do. No.
Okay.
Okay. And Joanne, speaking of, um, bids and stuff that we put out, where are we at for the request for qualifications for the airport?
Um, we extended it again because we got none. It's, do I, I just answered some questions for one of the firms. I think it's March 3rd, March 6th, something. They're coming.
Okay. Well, that, that's how, I, I didn't want you to have to...
No, we have, we have, um, at least I hope.
'Cause I had a call this morning on it, and I said, I would see you and I would check to see. 'Cause I knew we had to change the, the verbiage and the qualification request.
There was some stuff, yeah, that we recommended to us, so that we put it back out, and we had to extend the date. Um, and I'm hoping at least with the, you know, the interest that I got from that person, that we'll at least get one.
Do we ever go through a recruiting service to get people? I mean, we put it out like Water Resources, we just put that out?
Yeah, that's...
Do we ever use...
According to the way the code reads or request for qualifications, yeah, we advertise wherever we can. Um, I put it out on, on some of the building sites and try to get people to respond, but we don't actually, it's like, we can't go to, um, we can't go to a realtor and have them sell our property for us. We have to do it.
Right. I'm talking about like even for us finding employees that we want, like Water Resources or directors at that level, or...
I don't really know. That would, that'd be a question for Janet.
What was the question?
Can we, for like Water Resources and those quality directors, can we go to like a headhunter?
We normally don't 'cause of the cost, but...
'Cause we could, from a, a county employee standpoint, we could, but it is quite costly.
Yeah.
So, um...
As costly as, I, I keep thinking costly, and it took us six months to fill that position. It's how costly is that? So that, I mean, and it does, and I, and I, I get that.
We can bring back a quote if we'd like the board to look into that or Janet to look into that. Do you want me to?
I, I'd like to see us move forward. Some of these positions, we leave for six months or nine months or a year vacant versus...
Until filled?
Yeah, until filled, and then we're, that's detrimental to us and our, and our flow of how things go, and kind of gets us in trouble, I think. But because we don't have the leadership or getting things done there, or any place in the county. And so, is it beneficial to pay, pardon?
Any place in the county would be a struggle.
Any place that we're not getting, getting somebody that's supposed to be the leader and run the department.
Yeah. I, I will get with Janet. We're good, because I know we've used temporary staffing before, so, right?
That's not something we want to use for those...
Well, right, right, sure. But let me look into that.
So, you know, if it costs us a little bit of money to get the job...
But the problem is, it's a problem across all fields right now, is recruitment. It's not just Water Resources. And, and now that we have changed the job description, that you don't have to have a P B, I'm hoping that we...
It'll be easier.
It'll open it up. So...
Well, and you, you saw it with the maintenance. We had, we, we still have positions open there. We got someone who came, and then as soon as the money was better somewhere else, he left within a week. And he was gonna work out great, but there you go. Because there's so many things open right now. I think that's kind of the norm, but all. All right? Anything else?
No. And, uh, thank you for being so patient. I just realized what time it was.
No problem.
Come on up, Mr. Mike. Thanks, Joanne.
You're welcome.
Just checking.
We already did.
Yeah, we already did this one. Yeah, we got it.
Hi.
Morning.
Well, we come with good news. We, uh, our old building that we used to be in, you see, um, 124, actually, well, we were at 124, but 122 and 126, they have not been rented. 122 hasn't been rented since 2018. 126 hasn't been rented since 2014. We have renters, we are committed to deal with these two positions to authorize us entering an agreement with Rob, well, Rosen, Rosenberg Associates. Um, but in, we, we'd like you to approve these resolutions. However, I just want to point out a couple of things on that. The one for 122, it's a larger space, it's in almost 1700 square feet. It's gonna be a thousand dollars a month. And they have old carpet, there's old carpet in there, and then painted, a four, an atrocious green. So we, we're gonna give them, you know, we're offering them a $5,000 allowance to replace the carpet, repaint it, and also adjust some of the lighting. And then they, and then they also want the rental space next door against bad paint and the lighting's atrocious in there. So we've got a $1,500 allowance on that one. So they, basically how that works, they give us receipts and then we...
You refer.
Yeah, that's how they reverse the rent that you normally would pay. They want a three-year lease with a, a three-year lease or three-year extension, which is great. Um, as a side note to this, we also have Open Arms Adoption wanting to rent three of their offices in 124, which will be coming to you soon, as well as Ben Levinger, Levinger Associates, I think. He's renting another room. And then Dennis West from the City of Ravenna is marketing the remaining three office rooms upstairs for executive suites kind of thing. So he thinks he can do that. So I think they'll be able to rent out all those spaces that we have. We did, 128 was Pay and My Wellness. They rented from us a year, a little over a year ago, and we gave them a $10,000 allowance, and they, they knocked that thing out. It was beautiful. You wouldn't even, you wouldn't even know.
It's in the rental block?
No. Well, no, it's on Prospect Street, North Prospect Street. So, anyway, the only thing that I did get a call on this morning from the prosecutor's office who wrote the agreements, I didn't write the agreements, but I did write the resolutions in a hurry. So there's, in, in both resolutions is where it says, the first one for 122, it says they would give a $5,000 allowance on the first day of each month. He says, strike that.
I had a question about that.
And then the thing, same thing is true on 120, on the, there are $1,500 allowance that strike, they strike the part for, on the first day of the month for both of those. And then also on, on 126, we say $1,000 and then have printed the $300. That's $300. And so he just says, strike that.
Well, that's, yeah. So, so $1,000 shouldn't be there?
No, no, yeah. So one thou, the wording, $1,000 should be there. The wording should be $300.
See, on the resolution number two, it has $300, but before it's $1,000 and then $300. So it should be $300 spelled out.
So in one, the rent for 122 was a thousand.
Oh, I see, I see. I'm trying to think, do you subtract that $300 from that?
No, 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 not at all. We just separated the two, we got the two separate.
So we'll go ahead and pass these with the recommended changes.
Board of Commissioners moves to enter into real estate lease agreement with Rosenberg and Associates for property located at 122 North Prospect, Prospect Street, Ravenna, Ohio.
Second. Roll call?
Tony?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mike.
Thank you.
Hi, Tom.
I'll go to you, sir.
All right. Next we have county administrator. Well, you know what? Before we forget, we also had another ad on for miscellaneous. So don't let me forget after, Michelle.
Do you want to do that first?
Yeah, let's do that first, just so we have...
Board of Commissioners moves to appoint Chris D. Gilmore from Portage County Regional Airport Authority Board trustee.
Second. Roll call?
Tony?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes. All right. Sorry about that, Michelle. Go ahead.
No, 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 no. So this is just about, we had talked last week about the, um, Ohio One.
Yes.
So this is just finalizing that we are indeed joining in on the regional committee and appointing some...
So we can get some funding, yes.
The board moves to appoint the initial regional representation for the Ohio, for One Ohio Recovery Fund.
Board.
Foundation.
Foundation.
All right. Second. Roll call?
Tony?
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board moves to authorize participation in the One Ohio Regional Governance Structure under the Ohio, Ohio One, One Ohio Memorandum. Understand me?
Second. Roll call?
Tony?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
And you're the rep, right?
Yes.
Yeah, just to confirm that we are appointing somebody.
Yeah.
So if there's any...
And it looks like the township appointed Ted St. John for their rep. And then it's looking like for the, the mayor's, um, it's gonna be Chief Byer, yes, up in Aurora.